This idea of drawing people into the town hall and drawing them into downtown. We gotta have something to do when they get drawn in here.
Yep, and that is...
Can I say amen?
That is the direction that we're heading in.
I see a lot of horses and no carts.
Gotta have the horses first. So if y'all, if nobody else has any questions, if I can get a motion to accept the breaking ground quote for the park and pavilion.
Pavilion motion.
Alright, Stan has the motion?
Second.
Second, it's all in favor. Unanimous, thank y'all. Okay, so moving on to the traffic study options. Dina, you wanna talk about?
Well, what I did was I typed up this graph per se for Tom, so that everybody could see what everybody has quoted for the speed humps, speed cushions, speed tables. Now, this does not include the striping that Brennan Jones was talking about last month, because we never really got a quote on the striping. So, he actually sent us the attached email from A&R Engineering. Remember, we went back to council and, or actually went back to Brennan Jones and asked him to go back to the engineers for some one-way flow patterns and traffic signals and things of that nature. And they've come back with a large quote. If you can see on page three, I think it was...
Yeah, page three or four.
Page three or four, you'll see what it's gonna cost for each one of these tasks.
It's seventeen thousand dollars total for all of them, plus reimbursables. So really what we've got is, is we've got two different things here. We've got the material costs for the temporary speed bumps, or speed humps, bumps, tables, and then we also have the quote for the permanent, also in there under Piedmont paving. More than likely, these quotes do not include installation. This is just, I mean, this is just the product itself. Now, does your quote over here include shipping, Dina?
Um, let me see. Yes, all of those include shipping, but does not include installation on most of them. The Excel spreadsheet actually goes and it repeats what we've discussed the last three council meetings, the pricing of each of the humps, cushions, and tables. But Brennan Jones just added the A&R Engineering additional services proposal.
Yeah, so, so Dina did the traffic city options page, this one right here, and then in your packet is the actual quote from A&R. I had a conversation with DOT about a year ago, I guess, no, not a while, maybe about nine, ten months ago, I sat down with them and had conversations on a number of items. And one of the things that came up, of course, was the speed. One of the options that they put forth was cul-de-sac in Tarrentine down here, and they came up with a sketch for it as well. And when I knew that we were talking about, when I saw that the cul-de-sac was in here, I reached out to Brennan, I'm sorry, I reached out to DOT and said, "Do we need a traffic study to do the cul-de-sac if we already have this?" And he said, basically, "No, no, we didn't, we didn't need to do it, because we already had their sketch." So, we have a path forward on the cul-de-sac. My only concern with the cul-de-sac is that only eliminates the speeding directly on the south end of Tarrentine. So I wonder if we couldn't do a combination and do the speed humps as listed out on their, on East, on Main Street, East and West, North Tarrentine, and then work towards the cul-de-sac down here. So that way, we're addressing the speeding on North, East, and West, and then we'll address the speeding going south with the cul-de-sac. The only change that I would recommend making from that is if you look right here, see how much of David's land it's cutting off right there? See that right there? And that's taking all that. I'd almost rather sweep it and come up here and let's take it from the town without having to buy the right-of-way, because we can, I mean, we own that. We don't have to...
Do we need to purchase any additional land?
We don't have to purchase any additional land. And even over here, we could kind of, I don't know, I don't, I need to ask Joe if this part over here is part of his, but we could even maybe curve it just a little bit where we might not even have to get any of that for the cul-de-sac right there.
Yeah, do they, do we have the measurements of this?
It's probably a standard twenty-four-foot cul-de-sac? I don't know.
I don't know what's standard.
I don't know either, but it looks, it's probably pretty basic. But that would be the one change that I would recommend making is instead of doing that, come up right here. Only problem with that is somewhere in here is that distribution box.
Right.
We're gonna need to make sure that's not touched. But, you know, we can relocate that. Let me show it to Brennan. Right here, where it comes in and takes up that swath of David's property right there, yes, shift it over here and have it come up here. And then that way, we're not having to purchase or take away any right-of-way right there. And then we wouldn't have to wait on any acquisition.
How about your, how about your outflow, your outfall lines for your sewer?
We'll probably have to, we'll have to move it. I mean, because it's probably about...
It's right in here.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's right in here. Yeah, somewhere, somewhere in that area right there.
Yeah, you're right.
And, and two, and this is once again thinking forward as we go, what do we, what do we do and how do we plan and use this piece of property right there? If we have a cul-de-sac, that would make a great, make a great little pocket park. And we can do landscaping and buffering, so the residents on this side of town aren't getting any of the highway noise right there. And then we can plan it out and do it probably all at once. So that's another thing to consider.
I like it.
And while we're doing this, if we can go ahead and come to an agreement on whichever method we're gonna do, we can go ahead and get the speed humps installed at the other locations, raised crosswalks, whatever you wanna call them, at the other locations and probably get that done quicker, and that would be, you know, further down as we, as we do it. But I think as soon as we put speed bumps up down there, there, and there, that's gonna cut down a lot of it.
But didn't we have to get the striping first?
Um, no. I don't think so.
Okay.
I think it, now, you do have to do some striping before you get to the newly installed speed humps, but the narrowing was just one of the suggestions. And honestly, if we're gonna pay twenty-four thousand dollars for some stripes, or twenty-four thousand dollars for some speed humps, I want some daggers speed humps, because...
Yeah.
And then we can just do the striping as we, as we get to it. Other than what's gonna be required to let people know that the speed humps are there. Any other questions or comments from council? Because I do wanna give public a chance at this point to ask about any of these topics, because y'all are just as impacted as we are.
Have we got anything back from Brennan on the one-way street option?
Well, it was all in there.
Yeah, it's contained within this, and the, that falls under road alternative task three, possibly, I think. Yeah, that's under 3B and 3C. And that is gonna be...
It's gonna be about six thousand, sixty-two hundred dollars.
Sixty-two hundred for that.
Just for evaluations.
Geez. We're in the wrong business. Well, Dina and I look at each other at least twice a month and say, "We're in the wrong business."
I don't mind paying somebody to figure out something I don't know anything about, but I don't wanna pay somebody six thousand dollars to tell me about something that's just...
Well, when they make two hundred dollars an hour, I mean...
Oh, I know. I understand what they're doing, but, you know, the questions didn't need it. We paid them, how much money do we pay them on the traffic state to confirm what we already have? Do you know how much that is?
It's a little hard to say amen.
I can't recall.
I want to say it's like, it was another six thousand, wasn't it?
I was thinking six grand.
Sixty-two, sixty-three?
But I can't, all I remember is Brennan at all at one time, and it was just devastating.
And, and what we can do is, is I think we can go ahead and approve to go after the speed bumps, or speed humps, tables, bumps, they're all interchangeable, and then get Brennan started getting quotes, and then that way, we could have those installed, I don't know, before the beginning of the year, maybe?
That'd be great.
And at least go ahead and get it, you know, east, west, and north. I don't know, I don't know the timeline is going south, but if we get started on the speed humps, speed humps in those other locations, we can do that. And then come up with the cul-de-sac as it goes.
Okay, so you'd have to actually choose which speed humps you're gonna do?
Now, the, most of these things are not permanent, right?
Um, let me get back to it. That is correct.
Well, what you could do is you could, you could put them, you could put them all over the place, with the idea of taking up some down here on South Tarrentine. If you, if you do the cul-de-sac thing, you've got a couple more, you've got another one to play with.
So, so you're saying maybe go after like, for example, the traffic logics and getting those, and then having those installed?
Maybe put one, one on Main Street West, one on Tarrentine South, and if you cut, if you do the, do the cul-de-sac deal, you can pick, you can pull the one up on Tarrentine and double it.
Move it up to north.
Or we could just temporarily close that.
Yeah, that's a good idea, too, just temporarily close it. In anticipation of them making it to cul-de-sac at some one time soon.
The only worry that I have is where, is where we would close it. We have to close it past the driveway of Joe's property. So it would be just between here and here.
Yeah, 'cause when you come off of 54, kind of up, so you just don't want people not seeing it till it's too late.
And, and we'd probably have to leave some kind of warning or announcement or sign for a week to ten days prior, and then go temporary barrier. And then I guess maybe if we decide, go with something more permanent while they're doing the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and that's another thing, we can, we can vote to, can we directly vote to close or do we vote to proceed with inquiring?
Yes.
I got, I got some other, if we could do for...
Sure.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I know with public comments and all, but I have no idea what y'all are talking about with the cul-de-sac. That's why I'm here to learn.
Oh, Tom, you passed that down to them?
And so I don't remember any cul-de-sac discussion before.
The line's very faint.
Yeah.
Well, can we have, when is public com, when are our public comments at all?
Oh, no, 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 you can go ahead, no, you can go ahead and, on this topic, let's, let's go ahead and have it just...
Okay, um, well, let me see where to start. Didn't you say one time at one of the other meetings that there would have to be public hearings before you closed streets?
Uh, I don't know. I think the public comment period was the, the time period to, when we're gonna go to a one-way. I mean, I would certainly wanna take public comments on it, yes.
But I mean, public, I thought you said, they said public hearings, not public comments.
They were talking about the one-way.
Brad was at that meeting, I guess it was the meeting before, that's where Brad was there.
I think it was about the one-way streets.
Could be, could be, I just remembered the hearing, the hearing part. I've got a problem, and of course, this is personal. If you, what happens with the cul-de-sac is you're giving one section of Tarrentine complete and total relief from traffic altogether, and you're putting the burden on the other three sections.
But at the same time, we're putting the speed bumps up there first.
The traffic is still gonna increase traffic, 'cause they gotta go somewhere. If they're going that way, and they can't go that way, then they gotta go some other way.
They're gonna go 54.
Yeah, they'll probably go...
So you think they won't turn in, is what you're hoping?
Absolutely.
It'll make it more, more...
Yeah, it'll take more ti, it will take three times as much time to turn off of 54. I mean, it doesn't make any sense.
Plus the factor of the speed bumps as well.
When they go by my house, they're, you can see them, they're not even watching the road, they're watching 54, because they're trying to beat that. So, I mean, you know, take out that altogether.
It may or may not, but it just appears that that section's getting complete relief, and the other three will go take the burden off of that one particular section.
No, but you're only forgetting that we're putting the speed bumps out there first.
I know what you said, but that's hoping for the best.
Right.
That's curing forever that one section, and it's leaving the other three sections hoping for the best.
Well, people coming south on Tarrentine from, from 154, right now, they're shooting right on down and hitting 54 down below our house. And what we're talking about doing is, cul-de-sac's fancy word for...
You know, that would be an interesting thing to watch, to sit down on that corner and see what, exactly what they're doing.
And what they, what they're gonna do is they're gonna turn it out.
But just from the outside appearance, it appears to me that it's relieving one section at the expense of the other three sections.
You're right, it does, as long as you leave out the fact that we're gonna put the speed bumps over there.
If they work.
If we put the speed tables there, then yeah, you guys are like, you'll actually get relieved quicker than they will, because who knows how long it's gonna take for the DOT to do the cul-de-sac.
If you do, if you do the...
Well, that's just my comment, so that's, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, that's all I've got to say about it. It looks like it's kinda wopsided.
If you do the dead end of Tarrentine, people are gonna come down south on Tarrentine, and they're gonna turn left, actually, that's 54, they're gonna turn left on Church, instead of going on straight and hitting 54 at that...
But you live in that section.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter.
And you live in that protected section.
People are still gonna turn left on Church off of Tarrentine, they're not gonna, they're not gonna go down Main instead of going to Church. That's what you're asking, what you're concerned about.
And I think that once they've experienced the speed humps and the inconvenience of having to come down, go over a speed hump, turn left, go over a speed hump...
They're gonna say, "Forget it."
And then turn right, they're gonna be like, "I might as well go down to the red light and take a right." That's just what we're hoping for.
Right, correct, yes.
Um, we live in Warden Pond.
Yeah, we actually live in Snow, but I know exactly what you're talking about, because we use it as a cut-through, but after you do all the bumps and the left and the left and the right... I'm gonna do exactly what he says, just go to the light.
You're right.
Because it's gonna be way too complicated.
I think you're really probably sixty, seventy-five percent...
And I go through there, 'cause we go to the high school back.
Oh, okay.
But, like, it, I understand what you're saying about the, it looks like you're not getting relief and the other people are.
Yeah, it does appear that way.
But after they do what they're gonna do, yeah, that's gonna be a total inconvenience for people like me.
Yeah, eventually you'll, eventually you'll see relief too, Polly.
Oh, yeah.
They're gonna be...
Yeah, because the, the spot for yours is in between you and Eric, so as soon, they're gonna have, they're gonna be slowing down about the time they get to your driveway when they get to your speed hump. So this, you're gonna see it just immediately.
Well, I've been at Miss Polly's, looking at the, the right-of-ways when people come in on two wheels right there.
They don't even slow down to make that bend. And I've got pictures of three places where they've run off the road on both sides, hitting my mailbox and the sign, and several times.
Has it always been that way?
Huh?
Has it, have they always done it?
It's always been rough, yeah. Of course, it gets worse as traffic gets heavier, but I mean, there's never been no traffic.
Right.
I hope nobody hits your mannequin.
Huh?
I hope nobody hits your mannequin.
You like her?
I like her.
She actually has a battery, if I could figure it out, and she'll be fine. And I'm thinking about leasing it to y'all for the picnic thing.
I, I got some comments. You know, one, one thing we, there is kind of a novel idea of bringing people to town, and I, and I like that, because we definitely, you know, that's what we need to bring life back to town. The more congestion you have, you know, that, that's gonna deter speeders in and out of itself.
Correct.
And Liz and I talked a little bit about this, you can pay all the engineers you want, and you can do, you can go to all the contractors and all that, and they're gonna give you bids, and they're gonna tell you, "This is my best bid, and this is gonna be the best solution." But what I've found is if I, if I have a problem, or if I have a question I can't answer, I'm gonna ask somebody that's, that's had that, those same experiences, or has been put in the same situation. So, I, I, I don't know that we can sit here and say that we're the only town that's having this problem, and we come out with all these solutions. Why not ask, you know, other towns? And, and that's, I ran across, in my travels, City of Conyers, I, I, I thought, I kinda knew kinda how to get to the hospital and go this way and that way, and I, so let me try this little street and just see if I can cut through. And lo and behold, I cut through, and I got in the middle of all these speed humps. And so that was my thing, like, well, dead gum, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call these folks and just ask them what the deal was. And the guy was super nice, and the people were all so friendly and like, "Oh, yeah", you know, 'cause I just said, I said, "Hey, is this somebody can talk about, you know, y'all's street and safety and speeding and all this?" And this guy Brad Sutton from the City of Conyers, he was, man, he was like, "Oh, my gosh, well, I'll, I'll send y'all my, my ordinance and this, and this, and this, and all this stuff." And he was saying that, you know, he gave me some figures and quotes and stuff on pricing and things, and that's where I would say, go, go to some of these other towns and say, "Did y'all use Piedmont paving? Did y'all use whatever?" Or who that, but this guy said they, they did their stuff in-house, so the county did the work for them. And I know probably the county doesn't want us to do that, but you can still ask. I mean, you know, I mean, so you can kinda put them on the spot, but you've got, I asked him about signs and striping and all that, and he was giving me figures that were relatively inexpensive, like five hundred dollars per hump. Now, he also said, "That's not including like asphalt," but he was telling me, like, "They, they just do this themselves." He's got, 'cause I was asking him, I said, "How did y'all get the engineering, the dimensions and all this to know what's right and what's wrong?" And he was like, "Well, we just did this, and we did that, and we've got this, we got this formula that we use, and the way we build them." And I was like, oh, you know, I was like, "Well, what about, you know, what about if they didn't work? What would, what would y'all have done?" He said, "Well, they're made of asphalt, you can just, you can just dig them up." He said, "They're not concretes, if you put concrete in them, they are, they're gonna tear up everything around." But he said, "With asphalt, if you're gonna repave the road, you can just come through and just knock that top layer off." But he had a lot of information, and he said the same thing about first responders, making sure you reach out to them. I asked him about the liability issue and all that, and he was saying, "All that stuff has worked out." So, I, I would say, to Polly's point, you know, it may seem like on, on the appearance, you know, we're, we're looking at making a lot of changes, you know, at one time. I would think if your goal is to bring people to town and to slow speeders down, take things one step at a time and see what happens, as opposed to making a decision and making it somewhat permanent, or at least you've spent a bunch of money, and then you feel like you can't go back on it, because I spent this money. I don't wanna, I don't wanna admit defeat, because I spent fifty thousand bucks. So, take it slow, because you are gonna deter other people from coming to town, you know, with all the stuff that you're doing. And I, I, I don't wanna see the town just totally reconstruct its, its traffic. I agree, speeding is a problem. I don't live here, but I can see it when I do come into town. But what are your real goals in accomplishing this? I mean, it, if you, you know, you gotta think beyond just what's gonna, what's gonna stop speeders right now. There's plenty of stuff you can do. We can, we can accomplish that goal right now, but then what are the laws of unintended consequences that come and follow after that? You know, are you gonna, you, you, you're gonna have issues with, you know, people coming to town and navigating, and I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying that's something to, to look at. And y'all teed it up perfectly, you know, what, what, what are your goals for next year? What do you wanna do? What do you wanna accomplish? And that's, you know, you talk about parking, talk about sidewalks, talk about bringing people to town. I, I always go on the record, you know, I've, I said it individually, like, we do need, you do need to fix the sidewalks, okay? Yes, we settled the lawsuit, but I think there are some major issues beyond the issues that I had, and that, I just think that's something that would be good to, to fix that. I'm just asking, you know, I mean, I haven't really publicly asked it, I've asked it individually, like I said. So I would say, you know, hey, you know, use some money and clean that up, especially before you put in new, more sidewalks. Parking, we have property. We, we would love to partner with the town, okay? I, I, I've mentioned to a lot of people about some of my issues with, you know, opening up, parking, letting festivals go on, as long as those buildings are, are kinda still in flux. I, I, you know, my mom gets calls and, "Oh, so sorry, you know, the town's in ruins since her died and all this." That's a direct reflection on me, and it gets her upset. So, no, I, I don't wanna open up my land for that right now, I just, it hurts, it really hurts. So, later on in the future, yeah, I mean, we're working on these buildings. You know, another thing is if people have issues with, with what I'm doing, I'm trying to work within the confines of the rules and regulations, but, you know, calling the EPD from an anonymous standpoint, that, that really kinda, that stings, and that's, that's not fun to deal with. If somebody, you know, anonymous person wants to know what I'm doing, they can, you know, it's not, it's not, you know, hiding anything, everybody can know what, you know, I'm, I'm the owner, or we're the owner, come to me, let's talk about it.
I wasn't aware of any anonymous calls to EPD.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I had a guy call me, but that's, that's, I mean, you know, I'll, I'll do what I gotta do. But I just want, I want, I want us to think as a, as a town, you know, look a little, little further out on the horizon, and, and we would, we would love to see a lot more go on, especially if that's what y'all's goal is, to bring people to town. Like Tom said, there's nothing for them to, you get them in here, and there's nothing for them to see, nothing for them to do.
Well, if people were running eighty miles an hour down Tarrentine, they could come in here and see a bad wreck.
Yeah.
That's true.
Do I get to speak? I do live in Sonora, but can I still speak?
Sure, oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Oh, okay, great. We're only here 'cause of the high school, but, so like, when you guys are talking about in the town to town, do you mean like this ghost-looking town thing? Oh, this is such a hidden treasure. You should really try to do something with it.
Yes.
We live in Sonora, and we started our little farmer's market thing back in June, and it's kinda going very well. So if somebody had suggested to reach out to like other little communities around you, Newnan gets a lot of traffic, too, and I think that it's very doable with that farm that you're talking about. So it can be like a barter thing, you know, where they could come in, knock a few feet, and put their stuff out and help the community, because people will come out, because we live in like, close to like downtown Sonora, but we'll go all the way up to, to the Newnan one, and we go up to Saranby. So people will come, and I know that like the speed, I, I know that the speed's a problem, that parking's a problem, but you just need to kinda get it started. I totally encourage you guys to put that in your budget and do it, because, you know, and then get the younger kids to put it on social media, or even, you, I don't do it, I'm like a fossil, I do not Facebook, Twitter, or anything else. But, you know, if you all do it, and then the younger kids, and you'll get people out here, and it might, you know, wake it up a little. Is most of it owned by like a certain family, or is, is it...
That one.
I was like, I think it might be his family owns a lot of it. So is there, so is he the sole owner of it all, or most of it?
I think he has family.
Just whatever, yeah, the, the stuff you see in the ghost town reference, yeah, that's, that's ours.
I love it.
Oh, we do, too, yeah. One thing I would, I would ask, too, you know, is like, Polly was talking about a public hearing for certain things, closing a road or whatever, are we gonna do that? Because I think, I think we do need, we do need to let the surrounding area people know, or at least for comment, I mean, they may have ideas, or may have something that we're not thinking about, 'cause we're pretty well, we're very closed in on...
Yeah, my plan of action would be to talk to, to Brad and find out what we legally have to do, and then we'll, you know, we'll, we'll follow that, and then also open it up to public detail and, and, and comment and options, to present some options.
Well, I think we oughta come up with a, with a plan, and then lay it out, and then let people comment on it.
Yeah.
As opposed to laying it all out and then, you know, taking it here, there, and yonder.
Right.
Done what you wanna do, show it to them, and then let them, let them criticize it, poke, you know, add to it, take away from it.
Do y'all wanna kinda try to come up with a plan tonight? I mean, I think we kinda had the rough shape of one. If we wanna go ahead and do the sidewalks, east and west, I'm sorry, the speed bumps, east and west, the two north, and then look at following procedure to close and cul-de-sac Tarrentine, with the understanding of, until then putting down maybe one of the temporary ones?
We're gonna put down two and then you can take up there.
So, so do two north, one each east and west, and then the two, like it says in the traffic plan?
Do everything in the traffic plan except just put one on the west side of Main. And then if you, if you, if you do the cul-de-sac, take up one of there, take, take up one there, put it on Main. If you don't do the cul-de-sac, buy, buy another one for Main. Give Polly hurt, give the Polly side two, give the, both north and south two.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, it calls for one east and west and then two north and two south.
Calls for two and two, doesn't it?
I thought it just called for one east and west.
Then calls, then calls for two and two.
Does it? Okay. Well, whatever it says in the plan then.
Well, one, maybe what you're, where you're getting confused, there was a, there was one hump down here and a raised crosswalk.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So what you're doing, you do the raised crosswalk and not the second hump.
Second hump down there.
Take that hump, put it down here.
Past Bobby's.
Yeah. You're talking about sixteen hundred dollars, an extra, probably an extra three thousand installed.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Question, are you saying then there's one option to take it or leave it?
No.
But you said.
Kinda got one big plan.
Yeah, you said just one plan and let them come look at it. If you don't have an option, then that's take it or leave it.
No, here, here's your, lay your option out that we, we've paid for this thing, lay this option out. And, and then throw it up in the public. This is what we're planning on doing. What do y'all think? And then if people say, well, you know, I, I like it, I don't like it.
That's take it or leave it.
No, you can always say, okay, well, let's do something else. Let's, you know, we can, let's.
That's the invitation to comment. So it's not just one plan.
Do you have an idea, Polly? Do you have an idea that you would suggest?
Yeah.
That would stop it altogether?
I, I'm kidding, of course.
Well, if you stop it altogether, it's just the way it is.
You know, I'm, no, no, I mean, stop the tra- I'm kidding. I'm not serious about that, of course.
Yeah, if you get, if somebody comes with a better idea than what we're talking about, great.
I, I just, I like, I like kinda staging it just so you see, you don't know, you have no idea what an impact of one speed hump's gonna do, much less all this other stuff. And you're spending all this money. So, and, and like I said, talk to other towns. I mean, I, I, I can't remember, this was College Street in Conyers, I think. And I don't know how many speed humps there were, but I don't know the distance, but that was my question to him was, has it worked? He's like, yeah, it worked, you know, the, the residents on that street are happy. You know, he said, the, the only, and then that's when I asked, well, who's not happy with it? And he said, well, the first responders don't really like it. But, you know, we, uh, you know.
They gotta come anyway.
Yeah, you know, so it's, it's a trade-off, but, and, and it is a trade-off to those people that live on that street. You know, if you're, you know, having a heart attack, you, you know, so, you know, that's, that's a trade-off. But I, but I would like, like I said, the, um, just kind of in stages. If you're gonna, you know, if you're gonna do something and you know you're gonna go ahead and start with the speed humps, just say, that's what we're gonna do and then evaluate success or failure, you know, based on that. I mean, that's, that's my opinion and suggestion.
So you're thinking go ahead and put in speed humps and then?
You know, yeah, that, that's.
You're not talking about those little bump bumps, you're talking about the table type.
Yeah, cause I was gonna say, they've had those speed bumps once, they had to take them up. My, my, my suggestion is, is like I said, talk to other towns that have had similar problems and just see what, 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 you know, potholes they fell in and skinned their knee. And so I wish I hadn't, I wish I'd not done that, you know, kinda thing. Versus, you know, taking, like I said, engineers and consultants and all that, and they're gonna spout percentages and this works this amount of time, but you know, certain amount of time it doesn't, and we just might be the town that has the situation that this percentage of the time it ain't working. I don't know. Cause I, unless, unless.
Well, you're talking, you're talking about two things. I mean, you know, number one, you decide you're gonna do it. Then number two, you talk to these folks and see what they've, how they did it and what worked and what didn't, which is a follow-up to it.
But they, they may have different options and different things, other than what we've got on the table, is what I'm saying.
Oh, sure.
You know, hey, they stopped it on this street, but we did this over here and this is better, whatever. I don't know. I mean, I, you know.
Well, Peachtree City's done two or three things and there's, it's easy enough to pick the phone up and talk to those folks. And, um, you can get some references from these different, different companies.
Did, I like being able to tell them, like getting the accountant from Sonora, I mean, what about Turin, you know, find somebody with like towns to do it. And I, and I, I do remember Polly may remember, y'all may remember that, that accounting agency was just an, it was an auditing firm. It wasn't accounting, it was an auditing firm. And based on, like you say, every two years you have to do it of this size. But that, that accounting firm, auditing firm was like, you know, Dallas, Tampa, New York, LA, it's like, do we really need somebody without those kinda credentials and that, that company? It's like, come on, how about somebody in Cavie County, like you said?
Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, that was a lot of comments.
No, 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 that's what we wanted. We wanted to get the feedback and, and, and the engagement. Um, so counsel, what are y'all's, what are your ideas? Do we want to go the route of the temporary ones and get them in place and then solicit some public feedback on them? Or do we want to come up with a plan, like Tom said, and then have a public hearing on it? Um, I just, I, we've been talking about it for months.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and if we wanna keep tinkering with it, I mean, I, I, we can, but.
I'd rather do it or stop talking about it really, you know, you know.
Well, I'm not really, I'm, I'm not willing to stop talking about it.
Right, no, 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 yeah, yeah, we're not gonna not stop talking.
Let's adopt, let's adopt as a, as a plan, what the study showed us in the first place, two and two, two and two. Adopt that, get a feel for the cost of that, a, a razor cost of that. And then talk, talk to some other, you know, thousands that have done it. And fine tune it and then throw it up to the public for their comments.
Yeah.
Do it that way.
Yeah, we really do need the public comment.
Definitely.
So like they're saying, if we don't sit there and think about what kinda impact it's gonna cause, we won't get about in town. So.
Right.
We need to figure that out.
Luckily, we've got like four or five other entrance and exits, you know, where a lot of towns don't have so many. You know?
Yeah. And then one thing too, I, I would include in addition to getting the prices and get options, we'll, uh, put Brad right there in the middle and see what is the process for closing the street. And at the same time, I can be talking with DOT to get a timeframe. And I thought he was gonna give me a, 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 a price ballpark on that. And, and just see, see kinda where that is because that's probably gonna be a two-stage thing to, to do the cul-de-sac.
And also to the speed tables. So we've got to make a decision about those two.
Um.
Question, what kinda timeframe are you talking about with all of it? Should it be approved?
Well, we're in November now, um.
I mean, after the time is approved, how much, and when y'all make the decision, from there to doing it, what's the timeframe?
I think we could probably get the, the, the speed humps installed in just over six weeks, wouldn't you think? If not sooner. Cause the biggest thing, out of this list, the biggest thing right here is gonna be finding someone to install the cushions, especially if we go with the, the temporary cushions. That's gonna be the biggest thing, is finding someone to install them. And once we do that, then we just order it and pay the bill and, and have them put down.
I bet you, I'd be surprised if you could, if you, if you did everything right and I'd be surprised if you could have it done within, you know, within six months.
You mean the, the whole thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm talking about just the, just the speed hump, bump, lump part of it.
You think it takes six months to do it?
Oh, yeah. Try to get somebody to put a gutter on your house.
Really?
It takes a long time. See, you got all, you got, they got a, they got, they gotta fit you in, they gotta, they gotta produce these things.
Right.
It's not like they're gonna suddenly pull off the shelf. They're gonna come out there and they're gonna look at it and they're gonna, you know, it's gonna take some time, I think.
Yeah.
It's taken us five months to get our topo from Christopher Brothers. So, yeah, it does take up lengthy time for things to happen.
Yeah. What, what are, you know, the, the cul-de-sacs kinda do to me and just sort of getting me, uh, just trying to get my head right around it? What are you gonna do with the remaining Tarrentine, uh, after the cul-de-sac, you know?
In between the cul-de-sac and where it comes into fifty-four? It'd probably go back to the, the, I don't know, but I would think the state would be in the town, or maybe the state just owns it. I don't know what they do after they close the road. My preference would be to include it as part of the park right there, but I, I don't know how that would work.
And, and you're, are you, the way it's proposed right now, I guess, um, you're gonna have to purchase some right-of-way?
Well, if we move, the way it's drawn on that, we would, we'd have to purchase some from David Mullins right there at the corner. And then probably some from you right there past the, the driveway. That was what I was telling them was to shift the, um, the curve a little bit to the south. So we, it would be on our land rather than David's. And then rather than have to buy the right-of-way from you, just kinda skew the cul-de-sac a little bit to the east and have it kind of at an angle. So we wouldn't even have to, we could put the cul-de-sac part on the town side. So that way you wouldn't lose anything at all.
You gonna be able to meet the state highway?
Oh, I have no idea. I mean, that's just me.
Right-of-way?
Me assuming and hoping. I mean, I would think so, um, especially if, if they saw that we could do it and it wouldn't slow down the process.
Like I say, I, I'd like to see it kinda just do in phase. If you, if you're really trying to, you know, create the speeders, stop the speeders, you know, instead of taking a bazooka after it, just let's, let's, let's take away at it and see what the results are.
And in the meantime, one of the other options is before we do that, is just barricade it. Put up maybe fourteen, twenty-one day notice, this road will close such and such date. And then at that date, then we put the barricades up, leave those up for two weeks. And then we can come back and do maybe a nice planter or something. I mean.
And the speed humps, bumps, bumps, that might take care of the problem without any, any cul-de-sac.
Yeah, that's true too. If we put the speed bumps in place, that may just drive everybody off of it and we wouldn't have to close it.
I got one more question. The last time you talked about this, we talked about one-way streets and we haven't talked about that at all tonight.
Cause it's gonna, the, I remember.
Yeah, because, and part of that is because I, I guess we're working down the list, but inside the traffic study, the, the cost to even study the one-way streets is sixty-two hundred dollars.
Oh, okay.
So I think we're looking at some of these other options.
Oh, okay.
Prior to getting to that. But yeah, you're right, Tom. It may be that we put the, the, the humps, bumps and lumps down and, you know, we see a fifty percent drop in traffic. Of cut-through traffic. Cause, cause I, cause I mean, I'm still gonna come through here every day.
I don't care.
Right, ninety, eighty miles an hour. I mean, that was, that was your problem you were solving, you started out to solve, right?
Mm-hmm, just, yeah. I, I mean, I, I never had looked at it from the standpoint of cutting down on traffic. I looked at it from the standpoint of cutting down on speed.
Yeah, you know, Tommy, exactly. I'm with you on that, totally.
Yeah, I don't wanna.
That's been my problem. It's not the amount, it's the speed that they travel through.
Right.
Right.
And I still think that, and I know you argued about that, but I still think if you'd slow it down on either end, they couldn't be as fast coming into the town.
Absolutely.
But you said no to that.
I'm sorry?
You said no to that.
How did I say no to that?
A while, about a long time ago.
How you gonna slow them down on either end?
Reduce the speed limit. No, no, no.
Oh, 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 on the state highways.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I went to DOT and they did their speed studies on both ends of it and they said that they wouldn't change it.
You said what they said was that people were following the speed limit. That's what you said in writing.
Yes.
Well, if they follow the speed limit, if you said thirty-five, they would then go thirty-five.
Uh, no, what I said is they're going the current speed limit because.
That's right. But if you had the current speed limit at thirty-five, then they would probably go thirty-five.
But would they ever agree to drop the speed limit?
Who is they? Well, they may not. But why do they do it on other towns?
I have no idea.
Well, the, the glaring question is why you got, why do you have forty-five on fifty-four?
And thirty-five on one fifty-four.
And thirty-five on one fifty-four and Autobahn on sixteen.
And eighty on Tarrentine.
Yeah, exactly.
Could, you know, they, they have special sort of regulations with churches and schools. Is there not some way we could, we could, you know, the church couldn't, couldn't, you know, apply to the DOT for any kinda concessions or anything?
Cause we, because we've got churches on both ends. We've got church on sixteen.
Well, we've got a church here right beside City Hall.
Exactly.
They're rent from you, so.
Sixteen, you got one church on sixteen.
I mean, I, I don't, I, cause I remember talking to Alan Starr about that or something and he, I've forgotten what he said. Something about, cause Sharon's got the same thing. I've forgotten what he said, but he was like, DOT won't do anything unless you've got, I mean, like a legitimate school or something. I've forgotten what it was.
How do you have an illegitimate church?
No, school. I said a legitimate school.
Sixteen coming through Tarrent is forty-five.
Yeah.
We are actually looking at reducing the speed from fifty-four as you come into Tarren headed north on fifty-four.
That's what we were.
Before you get to around about who would reduce it to these forty-five there. Cause people think that's the extension of Tarrentine, so it's eighty down there as well.
Exactly.
And we're working to get that reduced a little bit. And then if they patrol it more, hey, there's income.
And our towns are joined together. Blue, our towns are joined together. So if they can get it slowed down, continue it.
And, and, and if Alan is already talking to DOT, I'll just chime, or if he, allow, we'll chime in on the conversation together and both of us will go to him.
It was brought up at our meeting.
Then we wouldn't have spent any money.
Okay.
It's not gonna stop people from speeding down here, I'm sorry.
But it slows them down.
It's not gonna slow them down. I'm here to tell you.
I think your, your, your speed hump strategy would be a great starting point and see how that goes. And I will discuss with you after the meeting about what happened in the, in another town where we own property that, that was a fiasco.
Really? The speed humps were?
Well, it was how it was done.
Okay.
But I'll talk to you about it.
Okay, that'll work. So, our options right now, are we still on the get prices, get options and public comment stretch? Or do y'all wanna go ahead and look at putting the speed humps down?
Well, I'm, I, I make a motion that we, that we adopt the plan that was submitted by the, by the engineer. And then, like I said, get, if you know, get a, get a firm quote or set of quotes from people, including the installation. And then at some point in time, after we've done that, some, some, some point in time soon after that, publish it, throw it up into the public and ask for public comment.
After the install?
No, after we get the data, after we get the, after we get the things.
Okay, 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 okay.
Got the plan, you got the quotes, here's what we plan to do, comment.
I think that's what he's asking, right? I mean, we have the, we have the quotes, right?
Well, well.
You can find, find a tuner.
We have the installation quotes.
Yeah, we need, yeah, we need to find, we have the, we have partial quotes, we just need to find a tuner.
Right.
With the installation. That's what I'm, I, I move we do that.
Okay.
So do we need to pick one?
Um.
Cause.
And, and see, the thing about it is each of them define humps and cushions and table differently.
I know.
That, that's, that's the only thing because.
They're all different.
Mm-hmm.
Why do they do that?
Well, number one, is there any, is there any legal, uh, blocks to do in any of it? Do you have to have them four inches tall versus six inches tall versus?
Nah, I don't know.
There is a regulation type on that.
Is, is, is there? And yeah, that's probably a standard engineering detail, but that would be something that, that I would, I guess I would get from Brad or DOT, or even Brennan, I guess.
And then, and then, you know, part of your, part of the fine tuning on the quotes is get a, you see what the county will do it for. Putting this, uh, kind of, or a asphalt.
I, I can ask, but.
We're saying.
They're not for it.
Yeah.
But if you're, if you're gonna do it anyway, you might as well say, hey, give you the business.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I've played no vote about where I feel, what I feel about asking for permission.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
They wanna start putting dark cars in here, they wanna talk permission.
Yeah, but it's easier to beg over, that's for sure.
Okay, so get prices, get some options and then do public comments. Um, so do we think that we're in November now, you think maybe mid-December? For a public comment thing, or y'all wanna try to avoid the holidays or?
Well, you don't, you don't have to ask for the comments on, you know, one night. You can throw it up and let them comment for a month.
Right.
And then come back in January and say, okay, this is what people said.
Yeah.
Holidays are a bad time to do stuff. Holidays are a bad time. Nobody, everybody's distracted unless you want them to be distracted.
No.
No.
Well, you know, fine, you know.
But if you give them a lot, if you give them plenty of time, you know?
Well, it might take us Jan-, it might take us November, December to get our act together on it. And then, you know, throw it up in a month after we decide.
Okay.
And then two, another thing that I'd like to do, I'd like to mark out there where they would be, future speed hump at, at each of the locations.
I wonder how much reduction in traffic if you put it on the absolute end of Tarrentine, on the north end, just said speed humps, you know, or somehow to frame something.
Even on Main Street on fifty-four.
And people would even go. Even go, they might go, whoa, whoa, I'm not going.
Let them see it before they hit it.
Yeah. Well, I'm not going up to the speed humps, no way. I got a brand new car, low riding, I'm not going, you know?
See, I, 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 I choose the other option, which is don't tell them at all.
Yeah, you want, you want.
I'm gonna see some guy.
You own a body shop or something?
But I wanna be, I wanna be in my backyard where you pull over. We chatted the other day. I wanna be out there and see some guy sixty miles an hour coming through there. I wanna see.
I wanna see their transmission fall out.
Would, would open a body shop on Tarrentine if that happened.
I would rather see, I'd rather see that than Andy knocked a hundred and fifty feet in the air when he's trying to walk his dog.
You know, one time we were sitting out there on Andy's porch and this guy just, low sports car just came flying through. He came about the same time a bird did. It was just feathers. I mean, it was just, it was a cloud and we're all, what was that? And he was like, it was a blacky, blank bird. He just hit it. Did you see that? Well, do we need to, do we need to make that motion and then? Um, there's not really a motion because I don't have a, 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 a firm amount to ask you to approve.
Well, you got a process.
But I, I, I do think that, that we could put it to a motion to get prices, get options and then solicit public comment.
Can we also get, um, I know, I won't be the one doing it, I work too much. At least get like, um, Joe said, go somewhere else and at least get two cities that don't get it and find out their, their pros and cons and the whole thing. So, at least three, I mean, three is two.
I'll give you that guy. I got some, I got his name, Brad Sutton.
Did I give it to you? Yeah, yeah. And then two, Delonaga has done some stuff as well that I have heard good things about.
Well, like I said, I won't be doing that work, so.
Yeah. Well, and two, I'll, I'll be honest, I had kind of fact, because I have Brad's name. Oh, that's the other Brad, that's our Brad.
Yeah, I talked to Blue last week or the week before about Joe and I's conversation about, you know, reaching out to other towns and. Yeah, because, I mean, he, like, I don't know him, but he said he wanted to talk to you later, but, but he knows, I mean. And maybe his, this little story of comments could tell you right then and there, we might not need the tables on.
So, so we'll get some firm prices, um, then I'll go ahead and get options, including other towns, DOT, Brad Sears. And then, and I can definitely do that by, um, December. We are having a meeting in the, in December? We are? Okay, I know that we've kind of.
But you're gonna lay all that up against the original?
That, yes, it's gonna be the origi-, in the original speed study.
And the traffic study.
Mm-hmm, the original traffic study. And then following the December meeting, open it up to public comments. And you know what? That would almost dovetail perfectly with the future planning that we would do, or the future planning work session of whatever we decide to do in January. Cause if we have a thirty-day window from December to maybe middle January, and then we have a work session before our January meeting, that might work.
And you could call a meeting too, just so you guess.
Yeah, we'll have to. I'm just looking at the dates.
And we can come back with some exact dates because we're gonna have to look at the schedule at town hall anyway. Um, so if I can, let me get a motion for me to proceed with getting firmer pricing, right in this town, firmer pricing, get options, including other towns, DOT, Brad Sears, and then setting a public comment period.
Add to that that you, that you're, based on the original.
Yeah, okay, correct. So based on the original, um, traffic study, we're gonna get firmer prices, get some options from other towns, DOT, Brad Sears, and then have a public comment session.
Well, I would think you'd wanna, you'd wanna come up with a, a plan and then ask for the comments.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah. And then the original study, the prices, the options would be the plan, and then we would open it, present it to the public. But really, if you think about it, it's based on the original study, it's the same thing we've been talking about the whole time.
Well, we just, we've, we've sloughed a lot of things off.
Yeah.
For various reasons.
Yeah. Okay, so can I get a motion?
I make that motion.
All right, Tom, Tom has the first.
I second.
See, they has a second. All in favor? Unanimous? Excellent, thank you. Um, so that takes us through our new and old business. Um, public comments over any and everything, starting from the left.
Well, I lived in another state and town and the speed bumps worked because we had all these speeders coming through our neighborhood, going into the next neighborhood. And we petitioned for speed tables and bumps, and then it just reduced the traffic. Like, they just were like, it's too much trouble. We'll stay on the main road and use our own entrance into our neighborhood.
Good.
So I've seen that they worked because at that time they were young and I didn't want them to be out and for them to get hit or something. And the dads even said, well, we'll just go out there if the city doesn't give it to us and just drop concrete in the middle of the night. No one's gonna know. And I was like, that's against the law. So we actually like petitioned and we, it worked.
Cool.
So that's why those speed tables are right there.
So ladies.